Two separate applications owners stated that they're essentially one development project. Essentially, one development project, uh, which was factored into the recommendation to, to support this project. And, uh, as far as the four oh vote goes, that, that is correct. It, the four zero vote incorrect was stated in the resolution. It was a three one one vote, it's an air resolution. Um, there's mention of a third noise, noise study. That third noise study wasn't processed as part of the project. That came in as public comment for this item. Though, so, um, there were the two noise studies that, that staff looked at, which was the shifting of the line on the decision. And, um, and also.
Related to the traffic studies that were prepared were both quick quack and racing tanks. Each had their own, um, traffic control that prepared separate studies. But each traffic, both traffic studies have been counted or each other's traffic. And control their projects in the area. So the results still show that had a whole service study of intersection specifically.
And I do want to point out that, you know, we, the applicant, the applicant submits an appeal application to staff, uh, in order for us to be able to look at the concerns that they raise as part of the issue and effectively respond to the, the appeal. In this case, we have a one sentence appeal that was submitted. And then a lot of new information is provided about the time of the meeting, which does affect our ability to be able to prepare for the information provided. So I also wanted to point that out. Let's all stop now.
Uh, thank you so much for providing that additional information.
I'll have my final thirty seconds.
Um, on the question, we have moved forward and, um, we're getting ready to go into, uh, questions. We do have two rounds of questions here, uh, that we will, um, move forward with from council members. And, um, those can be from, uh, questions of staff or it could be questions of the appellate or the applicant. Uh, so I'll start with council members now.
My, my question was gonna be, um, what were you gonna tell us?
This is very quick. Um, Mike has been a great.
Okay. Um, Mike, you have been a great help to me in this process. Um, like I said, I'm completely new to this and he, you know, told me what's up basically. Um, and I appreciate that, but I don't understand why he's advocating for this project. My understanding, and for the first one, my understanding is that he is a neutral party. And yet I hear him advocating very strongly for both projects. So I just wanted to say that. Uh, thank you so very much. And, um, so what I'll do is I'll reset here and allow two questions to move forward. Uh, and you can have two questions, Councilmember Snow. Uh, we'll start with you.
I believe it's Ms. Jakes had, um, asked the question, I think it's a third question, that if these two projects want to move forward together, um, I would really have appreciated noise studies and traffic studies that were also, uh, done together. Um, I, looking at even just kind of the, the overlays of what's been provided, um, as those two noise levels come together, you know, I'd like to be able to see how they, how they overlap. So was there any contemplation of because these are, these two are moving forward together, why we wouldn't have, uh, maps and overlays of the two that for us to consider?
Mark can speak to this, but my understanding is that the noise studies did overlap with each other, or excuse me, the traffic studies did overlap with each other.
That's correct. We're not prepared by separate traffic engineers. Data analyzed both projects in those seven.
And so did we do that for, um, the sound maps as well?
No, I don't, I don't believe that was done for the sound maps. I do believe those are independent studies. With those, I don't, I don't think there's a combination of the two.
Uh, thank you so very much. And, um, I will do one more round of questions. Um, I'll move on to Councilmember Luverne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I don't have any questions again. I look forward to us deliberating.
Mayor Portem Mendoza.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. And, um, I do have, uh, questions here. And, um, I did hear someone, um, who spoke about the, the water, um, and where does it go? And it was mentioned, um, that the water, um, would be recycled and then captured within the sewer lines. Um, and I, I noted here, uh, forty percent. Uh, but what I want to know is, uh, in terms of, in terms of the sewer line capacity and, and what it can hold, I just want some clarification on the sewer line capacity to make the accommodation for the additional water, additional wastewater flows.
Madam Mayor, as Mr. Phillips is trying to find the answer in his notebook, there is capacity because we have large trunk lines. Um, and, and as the applicant will come up and share their particular wastewater system, um, it recycles those waters, so it, it does a sort of their in, in loop water system. So, um, uh, I, I know when engineering staff took a look at this, they had no issue with additional capacity.
For sanitation.
Excuse me, for sanitation, Mr.? Yeah, and, and I did hear, it, it was mentioned that, um, it would go specifically into the sewer system. That's what I heard.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure that the sewer lines have capacity to accommodate the addition of the forty percent flows as it relates, relates to the business.
The forty percent is the, is our landscaping, which is gonna cap, that, that's, we want to correct that. So the forty percent is landscaping. We capture nearly one hundred percent of our water. We recycle it through our large tanks that we then will reuse. And what's, what we're not able to reuse will get put into the sewer system, which your engineering department signed off on.
And then, um, one other question, uh, that came forward, uh, that I don't have on mark by, and it was revolving around traffic flows and traffic concerns. And so can you just clarify, um, what that looks like yet, uh, as it relates to this particular project?
Mr. Hugar is the applicant's traffic engineer's keynote. Can you talk about the cumulative studies that you reviewed as part of both of these projects? Mike, could you give it to Mr. Hugar so he can talk about the cumulative studies of the project?
Yes, so the cumulative studies or developments that were analyzing. Quick quack, racing tanks. Addition to developments provided by city staff, uh, terraces.
We can't hear you. If you can speak directly into the mic.
Okay. The, the additional two cumulative projects that were analyzed in the traffic study were, um, two developments in addition to quick quack and racing tanks with the terraces, which are seventy unit condo deal project. And the summit states thirty units single nap. Those were, uh, traffic, those developments were also analyzed along Broadway's project.
Mayor Vasquez, what was the question? I mean.
Yes, and so there were concerns, um, that elevated regarding traffic and traffic flows as it relates to this particular project. And so I just wanted to get clarification regarding how, um, we will ensure that there are minimal traffic impacts, uh, to the residential community.
Uh, my name is Paul. I'm a registered traffic engineer and I'm the traffic engineer for this project. Prior to us working on a traffic, we have the existing and then have the cumulative scenario. Under the cumulative scenario without our project, we work with city staff to identify nearby projects that would contribute traffic to this area. That becomes a baseline, which it does include the racing cane and door. Then we add in our project traffic and analyze our specific impact to the study area and see what needs to be done if a mitigation measure required. Racing cane does the vice versa. They assume us as the baseline and have their traffic and determine what impact, if any, that they need to take. So both projects doesn't count each other as well as the additional nearby projects that may have traffic to the area.
Uh, thank you so very much for, uh, providing that, uh, clarification. Really appreciate that. And so we do have one more round of questions here. And I'll start with Councilmember Snow. Once we're done with this second round. Once we're done with this second round of questions, then I will seek a motion to close the public hearing. We will have council deliberations and, um, and then move on from there. So I'll turn this over to Councilmember Snow.
Well, I've heard a number of representations that will bring in, uh, any sales tax. Are there any revenues or benefits, financial benefits to the city, um, from this car wash?
Limited sales tax revenue, um, property increase, but it doesn't generate. But insignificant sales tax isn't expected from.
We have ideas on how much we're talking.
No, I, I don't have no much, but it's fairly insignificant. I can tell you that the other car washes in town don't even show up on our top one hundred sales tax per year. There is no sales tax.
I believe that, uh, the applicant would like to provide some comment.
Why? Why? Why does that get tied?
Right, yeah.
Was that a question about what type? We, we can simply do the math by the city imposing taxes on their constituents on services. Is it, that's what's going to happen with it? We pay our taxes on through our, um, through our payroll taxes. We're gonna be paying taxes from our property taxes. We're gonna be paying, uh, our impact fees with the city with it. So we are, we are paying fees to the city with it, but you're not able to get that sales tax from the constituents without the city imposing that tax.
Somebody picked that.
Uh, thank you so very much. Uh, thank you so very much. And Councilmember Luverne has stepped away from the platform, so I will move on to Mayor Portem Mendoza.
I have no further questions. And I do not have any further questions after this fine. And so Councilmember Luverne is coming back to the platform now. And we'll check to see if she has, uh, any questions with the second round of questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the consideration. I currently don't have any questions.
Thank you. And so do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Public hearing.
Do we have a second?
No second.
I ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Just so I, just so I confirm, the motion was made by Councilmember Luverne with the second idea. I'll now conduct the roll to call on record. Councilmember Agasio absent. Councilmember Snell.
Aye.
Councilmember Luverne.
Councilwoman Luverne, aye. My apologies, I'm currently on for my.
Okay. Mayor Portem Mendoza.
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez.
Aye.
Motion carries out above floor zero one.
Thank you. And now it is time for council deliberation. I'll turn it over to council members now.
I would really like to see the sound maps, um, go over both areas. See what the combined sound levels are. Um, I am okay with this going back to the planning commission, uh, to be able to see if we can't get that. And get those kind of overlays, uh, there. Um. Hey, so the projects are right next to each other. We have a developer who has no obligation to maintain housing that's already existing there. Um, the developer is able to go ahead and get rid of the current existing housing, um, with no benefits to, to the people who reside there and to the businesses that are there. We have a commitment from this particular developer, um, on, with these two projects to make sure that these people are relocated, um, that the businesses are able to find comparable spots available on Broadway. So they're not gonna miss their clientele, it's not a huge, uh, stretch. Uh, so it is very likely that most of the people who are able to access them will continue to be able to do so in the future. Um, so at, at this point, I'm, I would support either sending it back to planning commission to do these overlays to get clarity on the noise level studies, um, or as I see it, is. Everything else seems to, to be okay with this, but I think we do absolutely need to consider a moratorium on the number of car washes in our community. Um, and we have to put these things in place, so we won't lose our faces again. And then I also sat in the audience when they made the decision on the last one. And I, I saw what you went through, had to try and get your business started here. And every time I drive by that empty lot, it annoys the crap out of me. I, it's, we should have had a viable business in there.
He's not even in here.
Um, and I wasn't part of the decision and there are plenty of two.
He's gone.
Luverne voted for, for your car wash back then.
Wrong, wrong guy.
Oh. Thank you for having me. But it's been a long, so, but I just, I just wanna, I, like, every time I drive by that, um, it is, it's a sore spot, um, for this community. These are two solid businesses that want to come into our community. I, I hear it all and I feel it. And I am just as opposed on that, losing this housing as anybody else in this room. But we can only do so much as a city council and we can't prohibit him from not being owning these buildings. Um, and if you've got a good business partner who's willing to go the extra mile to make sure the people are housed, to make sure that people stay in their buildings, um, that they can continue to do their businesses so that we don't lose the small mom and pops. Not every business and developer is gonna do that for us. And in what I do, I like to reward businesses who do right by the community that fits around them and does right by the people who, who service them. And so, uh, with these two companies, I've been impressed with the fact that they're, they're walking the rock. They're actually gonna put something in writing. And as a lawyer, that's a big deal. Getting a developer to sit down and put writing and make these commitments in writing to the tenants is a big deal. And so, um, for these reasons, uh, that's what I, that's where I'm at at this point.
Thank you so very much. Uh, Councilmember Luverne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What my council colleague, Mrs. Snow says, well, I'll just remind us all that there's really no need to delay this any further, nor is there a need to send this back to an appointed body. We're electeds. And we're expected to take a position on things. We have every tool in our toolbox necessary tonight to move forward with the decision tonight. If we're gauging the community properly, that should be guiding us in how we're moving forward. No need to drag this out or delay when we have every piece necessary to make a decision tonight. Councilmember Mendoza points out, over her and I, made in previous years, there was a proposal to build a car wash business a block over by a gentleman named Neil Cappen, the gentleman who stood here and gave the last public comment in regards. The site was overridden with crime and blight. The site did not have housing on it, nor did it have operating and beloved small businesses. At that time, planning commission heard the item and voted in favor of its construction. I also want to note that I'm addressing comments made by one of my council colleagues and it's no coincidence that very childishly she chose to get up and walk away as I'm deliberating. At that time, it was stated during an official planning commission meeting that there was a record number of public comments left submitted. And it was further noted that those comments were overwhelmingly in support, in support of that project. People from the surrounding area shared that they were looking forward to construction of the car wash because it would get rid of the blight. There was public outreach done by locals and the results of their canvassing was shared with the deciding body and it demonstrated a large public support. Again, no homes were being demolished, nor businesses being destroyed. Circumstances in this situation are very different. There will be vulnerable people displaced, forced to leave what they call home. There are small businesses beloved by the community that are being pushed positively to extinction. In a conversation I had with planning director Mike Ellos on May twentieth of this year, he told me the racing canes and quick crash car wash projects have been in the works for well over a year. Well over. If we do the math, that seems to demonstrate that when Neil Cappen approached the city with his plan to construct a similar project, he was eventually railroaded by the city in county majority because city staff was already working with much, much larger pockets to build a mega colossal corporate corner at One Vista and Broadway. The amount of money and fees the city can extract or muscle out of businesses like racing canes and quick crash don't compare to a smaller operation like what Neil's would have been. Where does this fee money go, one might ask? Very good question. Representative for the car wash points out that they're gonna be paying a lot of fee money. So again, where does this fee money go? No clue. According to our auditors, they don't have a clear accounting either. This city seems to have a very deceptive and manipulative and unfair way of doing business. We had one businessman be so bold as to stand at the podium and say as much himself. And not only is that bad business, it makes people question us. It makes people question this government. Not only that, but it opens the people of this city to being sued for unfair business practices by this. Free market tampering by people like Neil Cappen, who perceived denying his car wash a block away, yet a larger company being granted their car wash as gaming and rigging fair business processes. Or, as he points out himself, collusion. This is also a business owner who has told me that when he approached city officials, high level city officials, to include the city manager, he felt like he was working with the mafia.
I remember that.
And since he was so bold to approach the podium today, I think it's okay that I share that. It was him specifically who told me that in dealing with Lydia Romero, our city manager, he felt like he was dealing with the mafia. All that to say, yes, I support the will of the people. And the will of the people, as evidenced at this point in time regarding this particular project, is to not have a car wash at this location. These are kind of the same things as the raising canes, but I'm gonna gloss over them. We do have authority to deny this project or prove it. There's no scrimming around that. We're electeds. We have a lot of power. And the power that vested in us should be used to help our community, to do right by our community. This project removes houses. The area allows for multifamily housing. It's eliminating existing homes, which is inconsistent with the general plan. All of you, especially come election time, profess that you're pro-housing. That's actually a platform that your party pushes. Yeah, well, this is getting rid of housing. This project also does not support or encourage the use of nearby public transportation. The general plan professes to encourage walking, biking and use of public transportation. All of you also profess the same things. Project does not promote economic development. Project is not compatible with the surrounding area as it borders tons of homes. And construction of this would cause an unfair burden of traffic, noise, vehicle pollution and congestion to an entire community. Again, this project doesn't support the general plan's objective to cultivate small business. Just the same as the first one. And for all these reasons and more, this project can be deemed by us here on the dais to be detrimental to public safety, health and welfare of our people. We have ample opportunity and the latitude to use our discernment and the power vested in us to make decisions about what happens in our city. And we have to ask, why is city leadership so willing to look past discrepancies, errors, misinformation, and especially, especially for such deep pockets? Why is our city manager and other high level city officials the same people who have access to the millions upon millions of dollars in tax and fee money that runs through the city so on board with this project in spite of little to no support from the public? It was evidenced today. Also, why are those same people so in support when it deviates so much from the objectives of the general plan? Why, as one person pointed out, why is staff advocating for the project rather than being neutral? People suspect our city officials gaming the system and colluding with certain business owners because they are personally, politically and financially benefiting from allowing some businesses to operate over others. Let's prove the public wrong. Let's use their fee money collected to livestream these meetings to do just that. So that people like myself don't need to be on social media livestreaming so the public have access to their government. That's a start. Why don't we use the public's tax dollars to perform a forensic audit that proves the public's money isn't lining city officials' pockets? Because as it stands, the auditor writes the receipts, financial records, Because as it stands, the auditor writes the receipts, financial records, and other documentation is missing.
Especially in the cash.
Let's prove people wrong, not by giving lip service, but by doing the right thing.
Mayor Proton Mendoza?
So, you know, I wish we could just do whatever we wanted, but unfortunately, we have zoning laws in Lumen Grove. And, or fortunately, we have zoning laws. Every city must have zoning laws. And these two businesses, in my opinion, and not, and not just, I mean, not just in my opinion, but they, they have complied with every zoning law. They have complied with everything that we asked them to do. And if we're worried about being sued, I think we should be worried about being sued, not that they be confronted, but we should worry about being sued by, by a developer and two corporations who put a lot of time and money into these projects.
So do you. Bunk sound studies, what do you mean?
You know what? I'm, I'm done. I'm, I'm done. I am just going to make a motion.
Mayor Proton Mendoza?
I'm going to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
We already, we already did. We already did, but...
I'm making a motion that we adopt a resolution. I'm done. I'm making a motion that we adopt a resolution approving plan development permit, PDP 220005, for the proposed development of 3,596 square foot car wash, quick quack, with nine vacuum stations and two canopies on 1.01 acre site, consisting of five parcels located at 7553, 7559 Broadway, and 7546, 7558, 7564, Central Avenue, in the general commercial sum.
Child, yes.
And so, we do have a motion. I'm going to go ahead and make a few comments here. And the comments are that, and it may sound repetitive, but this particular item was heard by our Planning Commission. And our Planning Commission consists of community members who are dedicating countless hours in reviewing this project. And there are findings. And their findings are actually outlined, not only in the staff report, but also in the presentation that we were able to see today. And it is our responsibility, our judiciary responsibility, to operate in accordance with the laws and the policies and the guidelines that are established, not only with the city of Lumen Grove, but also the state of California and at the federal level as well. That is our responsibility. And while we may not always like what comes forward, we have to adhere to the laws that are in place. What I will do here is read into the record the findings according to the Planning Commission. And the findings were that the development is not detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, or general welfare. Number two, the development complies with the applicable provisions of this title and/or deviations that comply with the applicable provisions in subsection D. Number three, the development, the development is consistent with the general plan policies and standards and other applicable plans or policies adopted by the city council. Number four, the development density or intensity does not exceed general plan limitations. And number five, existing infrastructure such as utilities, transportation systems, and communication networks adequately serve the development or will be upgraded to efficiently accommodate the additional burdens imposed. And those are the findings of the Planning Commission. I will say thank you to the dialogue that was shared here today, not only by staff and the elected officials, but also community members to elevating concerns as it relates to traffic and environmental and all of the things that could potentially impact our community. Really appreciate that. But also knowing that there are other business members here in the audience who truly care, and it's evident that you care about the future of our city. And while perhaps some may not live here, your biggest investment is here, and I want to go ahead and recognize that.
We're doomed.
It is not easy. It is not easy at all to make a decision. And while people think of titles such as mayors and council members, that's fine. At the end of the day, we're actually your neighbors. We're your neighbors, and we just decided to do our part. And we all have a different style and approach to leadership that's so recognized. At the end of the day, we all kind of want the same thing, and that's quality of life here in our city, our beloved city that we all have a heart for. But, you know, sitting here on this side and knowing that we have a judiciary responsibility to, yes, hear the public, and again, we're human too, we have our own opinions, but also to look at the guidelines and the laws that are set, we have to make decisions. And the decisions are based on the laws and not our personal opinions, at least they should be. That's the right thing to do. And sometimes the right thing to do doesn't always make everybody happy. I get that. One thing that I will say here is that I'm actually a subscriber of our existing car wash that's here in the city, and it's so correct that for those who are on the go all the time, it makes it really easy to have your car cleaned quickly. And yes, I am one of those who will run my car through and not use the vacuums. I'm one of those people. But my, my husband, my family and I, we actually subscribe. So, I just want to put that out there. But at the end of the day, you know, we do have this agenda item. I think we've had some healthy dialogue. We have a motion on the floor, and what I'm going to go ahead and do is I'm going to second that motion so that we can go ahead and take a vote. I don't see the value of sending it back and forth, this particular agenda item, when the applicant explained our number one question about the map, in the mere fact that the third map that came forward was essentially a map showing the changes of what could happen in terms of the sound as it relates to the Planning Commission's recommendations. So, that's the only difference between the third map and the other two maps. That was thoroughly explained, and I get it, I understand, and so I'm, I'm ready to take the vote.
The motion was made by Mayor Proton Mendoza, with a second by Mayor Vasquez to approve staff's recommendation. I will now conduct the roll to go on the record. Councilmember Gastel absent, Councilmember Snow.
So, I'm going to vote yes, but it is because there's nothing I can do to save the council.
You're just, bye.
So, that is the reason why...
Not getting re-elected.
There's no way for me to save this council forward, and I don't want to have the same mistake of having another empty lot like we have across the country. I want this to be a place where we can foster business, then we can work together as your business partner.
Political suicide.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Thank you. I just want to point out that this woman here, that woman there in the circle, they're running for mayor for the city of Lumen Grove.
So is this guy.
I vote in favor of the people's will, so I uphold the appeal, and I vote against this project. Aye. Aye.
Thank you so very much. It is so late tonight. What we're going to do is we're going to...
I'm going to let y'all speak.
...bypass the council member meeting report and the city manager report, because I want to get to these speaker slips so that you can hear. I think that's so important, even though we are at the midnight hour. I'm going to turn it over to my city managers.
Madam Mayor, City Council, we need to continue the closed session items to the next available city council meeting, which most likely is in September. So, I need a motion and a second in support to move that item tonight.
I, I move that we move that item to our next meeting. The closed session item.
We have a motion, and the second I'll ask our city clerk to hold the roll.
The motion was made by Mayor Proton Mendoza, with a second by Councilmember Snow. I will now conduct the roll to go on the record. Councilmember Gastel absent, Councilmember Snow.
Aye.
Councilmember LeBaron?
In closed session is to fight, the city is putting towards residents regarding a broken storm drain. I normally want to be in favor of playing this off, however, it is very late, and we all need to be of very sound mind because this is something that's very important. So, yes, I will be voting to postpone that matter.
Mayor Proton Mendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion carries on a vote of four, zero, one.
Thank you so very much. And as we move back to our public comment portion of this meeting, I do have a number of speaker slips here, but I want to restate the guidelines that surround public comment. And so during the general public comment portion of the meeting, the public may express their concerns not pertaining to items on the agenda tonight. Please note that in accordance with state law, the city council is not permitted to respond to any comments expressed by the public. If appropriate, staff will be directed to follow up with the speaker, or the topic could be brought back at a future date. Per Lumen Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 2.14.150, all remarks must be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any one individual council member. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes. When speaking, please observe the green, yellow, and red light timer at the podium. The red light indicates that it is time for the next speaker to approach the podium to begin speaking. And I just want to reiterate here that debating, demonstrations, and comments from the audience will not be allowed. This is your time to be heard. We want everyone to be heard, and if you cannot control yourself, then we're going to have to stop. So, I want to make sure that everyone gets their time to share their comments on the record. I'll start with, it looks like Cory.
The city clerk's office has received written communication for general public comment from Barbara Gordon and also Stephanie Morris. Copies of the public comment have been distributed to everybody seated on the dais, and also copies are available right as you walk into the community center.
Thank you so very much. And so we'll start with Cory, followed by Stephanie Becker.
Thank, thank you for our opportunity to speak. Tonight, you guys have talked a lot about business, and I just want to make sure that you guys understand that the citizens of Lumen Grove is the business. Earlier, it was brought up about asking for respect and quorum, and I believe the citizens of Lumen Grove were misrepresented, misrepresented. It has, as someone had called into the city of San Diego council meeting to throw support behind the project of the tiny homes, and also Monica Montgomery-Steph, it's obvious that there's no support. You don't have the support of Lumen Grove citizens to do that, nor that we have our vote. We never got a chance to vote on it. Tonight, though, the way that the citizens have been treated, that members of this council have forgotten how and who elected you to the chairs that you sit in at this moment, the citizens should have spoken first first, excuse me, I believe that's the normal process that the citizens speak first, but that didn't happen tonight. Well, 20. Yeah, there we do. I just, I feel like members of this ward are hiding behind their elected power, and that they currently, you know, they kind of thin out any opposition tonight and kind of ran and hide or hid, excuse me. These businesses that were here tonight, they're being paid. You know, every one of them, they're on clock, so they don't care if they leave nine o'clock, 12 o'clock, what, what have you. Feel like the people of Lumen Grove tonight were treated like crap.